We're calling meeting as a Murphy'sboro, District 26 Board of Education Order.
Mr. Wilson? Mrs. Brassel here. Mr. Green, Mr. Brown.
Here.
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Item number three is the pledge of allegiance. And by Mr. Brown.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Terry, somebody's at the door.
Move on item number four, approval of the agenda.
We had one small change, an additional FOIA request from the same group, just asking the directory information for substitute teachers.
With that addition, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
And second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Moving on to item number five, approval of the consent agenda, which consists of District 186 Budget Amendment Hearing Minutes dated June 20th, 2023, District 186 Regular Board Meeting Minutes dated June 20th, 2023, District 186 Special Board Meeting Minutes dated June 29th, 2023, Tri-County Regular Board Meeting Minutes dated June 6th, 2023, Tri-County Bills for July of 2023, Applications and Reports. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Number six, approval of District 186 Bills for July 2023. Are there any questions for Mr. Wilson? It's easy, carrying no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bills as presented.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Ewaldy?
Yes.
Mrs. Brassel?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Item number eight is a fishbowl item, I don't see a fishbowl, so I assume we don't have fish.
Communications.
No communications.
Communications.
Oh, I'll just pass right over there.
Yeah, we have two.
Oh, I tried to keep it going.
You gotta keep me alive once in a while.
Okay, this one's from Matisha Green. Dear Dr. Andrea Evers, Murphy'sboro School Board, and Matt Todd, this letter will serve as my resignation from my special education teaching position at Carruthers for the 23-24 school year. I've been offered a position to put more of my science training to work. Thank you to the wonderful teachers and support staff that I have had the pleasure of working with over the last 11 years. I'm truly grateful for this opportunity. More, Mr. McGards, Matisha Green.
Entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
This one is from Rebecca Dorr. Dear Mr. Hernan, this is my official letter of resignation from the position of Beta Club sponsor for the 23-24 school year, and she's at Murphy'sboro Middle School, for those that don't know.
I entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, we don't have any fishbowl items, so number nine, streamers will make an accurate request. We have two from Prairie State Wire requesting information, and they will both provide it in a timely manner.
The second one was provided within just a few days.
Yeah.
I asked for an extension because our internet was down for five days, and then I thought, I can get this done. So it's been done.
All right. Moving on now, item number 10, recognition of the audience. The Board of Education welcomes the audience to make public or employee comments. The Board has set aside time in the agenda specifically for this purpose. Pursuant to Board Policy 2.230, each speaker shall be limited to a five-minute presentation. Please be aware that while this is the time for the public to express its opinions and/or concerns, the Board may or may not comment regarding public presentations. If a matter of public comment warrants discussion or action of the Board of Education, such discussion or action will be added to the agenda of a future meeting. Under public concerns, I'll ask Dr. Jacoby to come forward, he's gonna make a presentation.
Thank you, thank you for giving me just a few minutes of your time. So I'm Dr. Michael Jacoby, I'm the Executive Director of the Illinois Association of School Business Officials. And I'm here tonight to thank you and to also honor Jan, who's just come off of our Board of Directors. She came on as a director and then moved through the chairs of Treasurer, President-elect, President of the Association, and past president, and just finished that role on June 30th. As you all know, board interaction takes time away from your family and your life and all of that. Well, that's been the same thing for Jan over the last seven years. And she has distinguished herself as a real leader in the area of school business and school finance across the state, and well-respected. And this is a kind of thing that is where you're chosen by your peers to represent them as a leader of the association. So I come out to everyone who's leaving our Board of Directors and do something special, and that's what we're here to do tonight. Our foundation is made up of contributions, personal contributions from individuals in our association. And as a token of our appreciation for not only the district allowing Jan to serve, but also Jan in serving the way she has, we come to make a $2,500 gift to your foundation in Jan's name and in honor of her work with the association. So Jan, it's been a great pleasure to work with you. You've really made a difference for the association and for the state of Illinois in regard to, you know, school finance and school business and operations and so forth. And so this is only a token, but, you know, our hearts are pretty big, they're much bigger than $2,500 and what you've done for us, so thank you very much.
And I guess on the next public presentation, we're gonna have our summer school presentations, correct?
Ms. Brock?
You have a floor.
You are the ma- Mistress of Fairamones.
So we finished session one in Richmond, and some of our classes have come to present what they did during that time. We had art, we also had puppet show, Games Unplugged, Lincoln Camp, and then a sophomore incoming accelerated math. So we'll start with art camp. This is Pierce, attending the art camp. Oh, awesome!
Oh.
Two years worth of art.
You can use the spot right by the Ewaldy right here.
How about I scoot over and then everybody can use the spot?
Yeah.
They can use that spot. There we go. Right there, buddy, right at the end.
Let's do the ending, sit there in the end where you see everybody and they can see you. Can you tell us about?
Can you talk to us about your project?
So for the last two years, I've been doing art camp for the summers at the, for summer at the high school. And at art camp, you get to make a bunch of stuff, and I'm gonna show you guys what I made in art camp. I'll show you what I made last year first, and then I'll show you what I made this year. So last year, we got to work with clay and make clay items. So this is a clay item that has my initials on it, and you get to paint, and I painted this, and they bone the clay to make it stay. And it's a little pocket that you can look inside of and put things on, and you can hang it up right there. And you can call your name on the back with a, um...
Sort of like a little exacto knife type of thing?
Yeah, toothpick.
Toothpick, even safer. There we go.
And then we made another little thing out of clay. It's, this is a pot that we make out of, so we roll little clay pebbles, and then we put the pebbles together, and when we were done putting the pebbles together, we bone it to make it stay, and then we painted it. I'm just gonna set this. And this is supposed to be a jellyfish. You, um, we, um, put tissue paper and put new nails on this, so we made this out, and then on a balloon, so then we popped the balloon, and then we got the cap, and then we put the little stringer together, and we used pop sticks and some wire and rubber bands, and more tissue paper, and you can paint it up up here. This is, um, a little thing, it's like a little statue that you, so you get a piece of wood, poke holes in it, and find some metal wires, and hang them, and put it down to, um, the little holes. And then you put a shark over all of it, and then you can paint this. At, well, first you gotta put layers of glue on it, and then you can paint the shark. I made a shark.
Is it Shark Week?
All of this stuff is been from my first year. And now it's time to move on to my second deal. This is the name tag that we get, that we got to make, that was in front of our desk, so we could know where to go. And then... Never mind. And then we got to make a fish, and we stuffed it with little shredded up bits of paper. And we stuffed it like that, and I made one of the sides of food fish. He's actually clear on the waddle behind him, the blue stuff, and then that's, he has a bunch of different types of food in him, he has apples, then he has an apple, a sandwich, a piece of pizza, a taco, and a banana. And then it's just a regular fish on the other side, and we attached a string to him like this, and a little stick, so you can pretend you're, um, using a fishing rod to catch it.
Pierce, what grade are you in?
What?
What grade are you in? Or what grade will you be in in the fall?
I'm going into second.
Fantastic. So does that make you seven or eight?
I just turned eight.
You just turned eight, fantastic.
Uh, and this is the top of the sea turtle, which is the shell, it's a sea turtle. This is a sea turtle, and the top of him is a shell. And then you got a face. We used little pebbles first, and then we rolled morbles, and then we dipped them into different colors of paint, and then we rolled them around on a paper. And then when we were done with this, we put, we taped them on, and I decorated, and I put some, uh, two eyes and a mouth on it. And here with the other limbs, I think it's missing a bottom fin. It's in the bag.
Pierce, what was your favorite part about art camp?
Um...
You can stand up, you don't have to stay seated.
That we can, that we can make all this cool stuff, and that we pop balloons, and that you can learn new things, how to make oats. But my favorite part of making the projects was probably getting to stick the wires in, in that, and, um, putting the labels on this.
Have you shown us all your items? Or are there more goodies in the bag?
Is that everything, Pierce?
If you hand it over to Ms. Brock, there's some Scotch tape she can fix, fix your dorsal or your...
We also had a puppet show, and they performed the last Thursday, and they have also, we have another session two, so we have more enrichment, and so you're invited to come next Thursday, um, the 27th at 10:25. You would like to see the puppet show by the General Johnny Logan students at the Giraffe Stadium.
Cute book.
Another class we had was Games Unplugged, and I think we have some presenters here for that as well, Pierce.
We went to Games Unplugged, Ms. Fry's camp, um... Games Unplugged teaches kids games that they wouldn't know exist otherwise. It's a very fun enrichment camp that also teaches some games, history slash backstory. It gives kids a chance to interact with other kids and their friends that they might not have seen in a while. It also gives kids a chance to bring out their competitive side with its fun turn of entertainment of some games. Kids also get to bring home a board game of their choice along with their cards.
In the final week of Games Unplugged, the extra week, kids were also labeled as creating their own games, letting their creativity take shape. The games could be anything they wanted, some examples could be about Don't Kill or Taylor Swift.
Ms. Fry made it so that it was, was fun to learn about the games and then play them. The smiles and happiness that were all over the room made it clear that students slash kids loved it so much. Playing the games was truly fun.
The game Go, the game Go is a game about strategic warfare.
And Call is a quick game where you have to collect gemstones in order to win.
Bad Game Man is a two-player game with contrary movement.
Many cards, many card games can be played with cards.
Chinese Checkers is a two-to-six player game where you, you must get to the other side first.
And then, um, down here we have a little like picture of Go.
Classic Solitaire.
Yeah, and over here are a bunch of pictures of all the games.
Do you have a favorite?
Um, I enjoyed, I enjoyed Bad Game a lot.
Man Call.
What grade are you in?
We're going into seventh.
Yeah.
Well, I'll come over. Do you learn Avalanche or Traditional? Because I'm really good at Traditional, but not like the Avalanche.
We're wearing long digosmosis and one-handed Solitaire.
Yeah, I'm on Call, yeah.
For the card game phase.
Yeah. I'll come and play at Man Call if you have a fan.
Watch out, she's fierce.
Packy Man I'm not great at, but I'd like to learn if someone will teach me slowly. Maybe you could attend next year if they had it. I love it, I love that idea. I love playing games.
Yeah, um, Bad Game Man is, is a really fun game. The tournaments that we had to do these, for some of the games, like the first week, there were like, we had these tournaments, we had a Bad Game tournament and a Man Call tournament.
And she was in the semifinals for both of them.
Yeah. But I, I, I made it, I made it to the finale of Man Call, but I made it to semifinal for Man Call.
Oh yeah, I have to come to this next year.
It was Evelyn versus Evelyn on the back in the Man Call one.
That's amazing. We have a few board members who will probably want to learn to play next year too. Yeah, for visitors?
Yes.
You can have to work?
Maybe.
That's Ms. Fry.
That's Ms. Fry, yes.
This is very fun.
Yes. We also made, we also made a little like Google slideshow, but we can't show that here. It just had a bunch of, all it had was just a bunch of pictures of all the games. I worked really hard on it.
You worked really hard on it?
Yeah.
Do you have it on a slide drive, or do you have it on the flash drive?
I have it on my phone.
We are gonna have, we, it's okay, we're gonna, if you hand it to Ms. Brock, she will make sure that everybody here gets to see it, okay?
Okay.
So that that hard work will be worth it, right? All the board members will see it, we'll get it to them tonight, okay?
Okay.
And Ms. Brock will take your phone, if you hand it over to her, she'll, she'll email it to me, and it'll be good to go before, before they all leave. Thank you so much.
The other camp we had during session one was Lincoln Camp, and so Ethan is here to present.
Hello, my name is Ethan Dover, I've been here before, last year for the technology camp. This year I am here to talk about the Lincoln camp and, and talk about what I learned. The first thing is there were two weeks of, of the Lincoln camp, and in the second week, like, the second week, there were two field trips, one on Tuesday and one on Thursday. The first field trip was to Springfield, Illinois, and the second field trip was to Jo- Anna Jonesboro. We went to the Lincoln Douglas debate in Jonesboro. So, and we'll talk about that later. In the first week, we learned about Lincoln, we learned about his childhood, we learned about, uh, him as an adult, and we learned about him as the president. As we learned about him as a child, we learned about his family, we learned about his mother, who died of milk sick, which was a well-known disease, which had been a deadly disease that could kill people when they drank milk. It was not known how it happened back then, but now we can, can know, now we know what causes it, and it is a weed that causes, uh, damage to the human body. Anyways, moving on. Lincoln was born in Kentucky and moved to Indiana, I think. I'm not sure. A while later, he moved to Illinois, a few years later. In Illinois, I mean, not Illinois, in Indiana. In Indiana, I believe, he met his stepmother who encouraged him to read. And here's a fun fact, Lincoln's wife was actually also born in Kentucky, but she was born in a different part of Kentucky. Lincoln moved to Illinois from Indiana, where he, when Lincoln was nine years old, I'm not sure if he was in Indiana at that point in time, he was kicked by a horse, and he was, uh, we believe that he had brain damage from that. Moving on, Lincoln worked a- as a rail splitter for early parts of his life, and later began to work as a lawyer. At one point in time, he did, oh, try to become part of the Senate, which I do believe at one point he succeeded in. And the, another thing I'd like to talk about is his presidential years. When he was elected as president, not very many people liked him. So that's a fun fact that you probably didn't know. Another thing is, hold on, I'm trying to think of something.
What was your most interesting fact about Lincoln that you didn't know before?
I'm not really sure. Probably if I had to think of anything, it would be that most people disliked Lincoln when he was alive. In the second week, we learned, not only did we have the field trips, but we learned about Lincoln's assassination and the Hunt for his assa- his assassinator. I'm not sure about the word, actually. I don't think, but his, and the Hunt for his assassin, John Wilkes Booth. John Wilkes Booth killed Lincoln when he, when Lincoln and his wife Mary Todd Lincoln went to a feeder. Mary Todd Lincoln, let's talk about her now. Mary Todd Lincoln, as you may remember, was born in Kentucky, just like Lincoln, but not in the same area of Kentucky as Lincoln. She was born in a family that owned slaves and had, had a lot of siblings. Her mother also died, and, but unlike Lincoln, her stepmother was, had a decently bad relationship with her. She was born to a rich family, and, and so that she would be, and she had a need for attention. To be recognized, she started to learn politics so that she could talk to his father and his friends about politics, so that she could be recognized by his father and his, and her friends. So there's that. Mary Todd Lincoln was also interested in shopping. Here's a fun thing that some people say, the Todd, the Tods, the T, the Todd, the name Todd actually had two D's in it. So there's a thing that some people said about that family, God only had to, God only had one D, but the Tods had to have two. There's that, I thought you might buy it for money. So Lincoln, Lincoln, some people do believe that there was another person that Lincoln loved. I do not remember the name of them, but...
Skip over that part.
We're not sure that he was interested in her, but we do know they had a relationship as friends, and we know that she called Lincoln to her bedside when she died. She died of a disease too. I don't think it's the same disease that killed his mother, but I think it's something similar.
Did you get to go out to the cemetery where he's buried?
Uh, no.
No? Oh shoot.
In Springfield?
The teacher, Darrell Young, did invite us to do that.
Isn't that where we went to the tomb? The tomb is the cemetery.
Did you get to rub, did you get to rub the nose of the statue?
Yes.
There you go.
There are a lot of pennies on the statue.
Yep.
We, at the cemetery at Lincoln's tomb.
Yep.
We, there were lots of gravestones outside, you could see that. And then where Lincoln was buried, there was a building, it had some statues on top of it, including a statue of Lincoln. You went inside, and there would be a tour guide, I, I believe there was a, there would be a tour guide. Inside, there was a smaller model of the statue that was, of the statue that you'll see. There's a smaller version of that, a little model of it. Of the statue at, in Washington of Lincoln, sitting with the American flag.
Fun fact that you don't, didn't maybe learn, the only town named for Lincoln before he became president is Lincoln, Illinois, and he christened the town, he dedicated the town with a watermelon. So the high school that I graduated from is Lincoln High School, and their school colors are red and green because a watermelon is green on the outside and red on the inside. So it's like year-round Christmas colors there. But it's really because of the watermelon. So no one really understood why we were red or green, and green, except that they thought we had bad tastes, but it was really the best.
Watermelons are actually two different shades of green.
Are they?
Yeah.
We just went with the foresty green. Still an ugly look, but I survived.
And that's the color of seeds inside of the watermelon.
You are fascinating, you're too. Are you gonna come back next year and present on a different summer camp?
Yes.
We'd like you to be the explorer of all camps, because quite honestly, the board, you know, when we, when we have to decide what camps are, are valuable to continue, right? It sounds nice to have the experts, right? The students tell us all?
Exactly.
So, um, uh, how many thumbs up would you give it? Two thumbs up, one thumb up? Four? For, um, Lincoln camp?
Okay. I would give Lincoln camp a six, seven, or eight out of 10.
Thumbs what?
In thumbs up.
In thumbs up, okay. Six, seven, or eight out of 10. Thank you very much. There you go, I love it. Good job.
Thanks, Ethan.
We're finishing up session two, so we have one more week, and so this time we have six different enrichment classes, so they'll come and present at the August meeting. We're finishing up session two, so we have one more week and so this time we have six different, um, enrichment classes, so they'll come and present at the August meeting.
So, the parents, you know, continue to give, uh, feedback on ideas, you know, things that you've, your children have participated in, um, to your building principles. So that we, we love adding new classes and, um, getting the feedback from the children, it's so powerful. So, Ms. Brock, thank you for continuing to do the, the summer school, um, we are very appreciative of, um, you and all the teachers who commit the time and energy to making things special for kids.
So our kids are useful.
I think I can speak on behalf of the board, it's something that we really, really enjoyed. And so it started with, um, the COVID care scholars where they, we looked at, um, uh, learning loss and skill recruitment and said, how do we do this better than just doing, you know, the basic English language arts, math, science, social studies? How do we really endeavor to, to be great? And it was really, the teachers created the proposal. We have, you know, several teachers, you know, here who've, who've been part of summer school and, you know, it's, it's powerful. So, um, we're really, really appreciative of the teachers for coming up with creative ideas and really bringing the kids in, so. Thank you.
Very, very good. Were there any other public concerns? Are there any employee concerns? If not, we will be moving on. Your old business item number one is approval of MHS parking lot extension bids, I believe you all were emailed about.
And there was a good question. Um, the dimensions were approximately 187 feet wide by 284 feet long. So it's a pretty substantial surface. And the original estimation was, was within $10,000 of what, what they kind of had estimated for the scope of the project. So, we added 10 feet on, on both ends, so when we, when we look at that, the increase of space, um, right, right in line where we were thinking.
Is that space, I'm sorry, that space gonna be just for, is that for parking too?
Parking, it will be for parking, like expansion parking. So when we have Apple Festival, Drums at Apple, or Apple Time, um, large football games, graduation, overflow parking, when we build the new gymnasium, a few, at least one or two of the lanes of, uh, the current parking spots will be omitted. So we're kind of being, we're not kind of, we are being proactive before we get the construction underway for the, the new gym. Um, we saw first plans for the new gymnasium, lots of cuts. I mean, the original estimation with our current list was about at least 5,000, or $5 million over budget. So, um, we're, we'll have hopefully a closer rendering of what the gym will look like, uh, in the next month or month. By the next board meeting, we should have a really good drawing of what the, um, the new facility will look like. But this, this parking will be for parking, march, marching band, um, all kinds, I mean, it will have multiple, multiple uses. Um, uh, it should be noted too that the two alternate bids will be included in that. Um, they were things that could be deducted, but it will include the lighting, which when you're adding that larger a surface, we need head lighting because you potentially could have elderly people, you know, walking out to the parking lot as well as fencing so that people don't, um, try to go through the yard and get onto the surface when it's being utilized. So, it's, it's gonna be a nice parking area.
Will that be chain link fencing?
It is, um, well, the original design, um, Mr. Ripley picked out something that, um, was Homeland Security grade. Um, it was more of like a, like a rope fencing that was really hard to come by, so they had to modify it a little bit. But it's, it's not going to be a chain link, it's a little bit.
Like posting cable.
Posting cable, yeah, but that, but the, the kind that he chose was, uh, designed to withstand like, um, multiple, um, military grade, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, Humvees going through it. So we don't quite need that, we just need a big pickup truck.
Yeah.
Yeah, that grade. So we're, we're gonna kind of modify that, but the pictures he showed when they called the manufacturer, it was a little bit higher grade. So, we do feel, feel like there will be some wiggle room on that, what the, um, uh, didn't, that didn't be with that, that fencing. So, the cable will be less because we're not going that, I go that wild. So, there we are.
I'm assuming striking, all that, I mean, it's gonna be covered in gold, obviously, but, uh, you know, it's.
But you did say the lights were included.
The lights, the, the perimeter lighting and then, um, you know, there's some existing lighting out in that area, but not sufficient to cover that whole space, so. So, yeah.
It'll all be LED and they'll, and I think we went out there that day to visit it, there'll be some pointing back into the old parking lot, over by the softball field too, to brighten that area, I think.
Sometimes they do play coast to dust, and with the field lighting, that'll be on for. Any other questions? We had two bids and you can see that, um, one of the Sam Brown is the Wardy, substantially less, so. Satisfied that we had two, two that bid.
Questions, I entertain a motion to approve the Sam Brown's, uh, for the Parkland High School.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Mrs. Zivaldi?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes. Item number two, approval of press, press policy updates, number 112, they've been under review since May meeting. Administration recommends approval. If there's no questions, I entertain a motion to approve the press update.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carried. And now we get to go down to the July list of events. Item number one on your new business is the Jackson Perry County Career Technology Education Cooperative.
It's essentially the entire D wing almost, so, there it is.
I will entertain a motion to approve the CTE cooperative.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carried. Item number two, approval of dairy bid for 23, 24, that's enclosure one. Looks like only one bid was received from Prairie Farms, so that's an easy one. I'll entertain a motion to approve the dairy bid.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Zivaldi?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes. Item number three, this is my favorite here, one of, we received one bid from Bimbo Bread. For the bread bid for 23, 24. That's an easy one, also I entertain a motion to approve the bread bid.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Mrs. Zivaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs., Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Item number four, approval of food bid for 23, 24. There are two food product vendors. Presented to meeting.
You should've got them by email.
Oh.
You guys all ready to see them?
Yes, we do. I remember that now. Are there any questions on the food bid?
Georgia, are we still having issues with shortage of, like, not being able to, whenever everything's not getting it?
Things are unavailable, you know, it's hit and miss when they're available, I don't know. It's not gonna get any better this upcoming year. They've already expressed that.
So you're gonna use what you can from?
Well, you do what you can with what you can buy. And so far, it's worked. It's a little hectic sometimes, but it's done.
So that's why you see Cook's surprise, I'm just kidding.
No, we don't do Cook's surprise, but there are changes that have to be made.
We could watch with chicken nuggets.
All right. No other questions, I entertain a motion to approve the food bid.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Mrs. Zivaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Item number five, approval of waste collection and disposal bid, that was enclosure three. Recommendation is, the public services, any, any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
We had two.
Republic and the other.
Hakuna, which was an outside, outstate contractor out of California, so I guess it was more of a waste management, like, decentralized. We didn't have to worry about it. They weren't the lowest bid, but. I think they were a subcontracted waste service to someone local, so it seemed unusual, but.
Did Republic have it this year?
Yes, yes.
They've had it for quite a number of years.
Uh, motion fixed up?
In a second.
Second. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Zivaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Item number six, is approval of the motor oil bid, there was only one bid received from Heinz Oil. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
In a second.
Second. Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Zivaldi?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Item number seven, is approval of gasoline bid, again, only one bid was received from Heinz Oil. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Mrs. Zivaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Item number eight, approval to destroy verbatim recordings of closed session. Law states that we are required to make and keep a verbatim audio or video recording of every closed meeting. And those recordings may be destroyed after 18 months by vote of the board. If we choose to do, destroy the meetings, recommend we destroy recordings for closed session meetings dated July 20th through June 2021. I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
In a second.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carried. Number nine is approve the linkage agreement with Centerstone. It's just a yearly thing.
And your contract, yep?
Yep. I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Motion to approve?
In a second.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Item number 10 is permission to employ ancillary employees as needed. It's a yearly thing, also just as needs arise, we can give approval to approve what we need.
So these aren't creating new positions, these are just filling?
This is a big, it's a, I added in an IEP meeting, we have to meet that need, you know, sometimes faster than, you know, or if we have a move-in child that has unique needs, or sometimes even a temporary situation we had.
They're still brought to the board?
Yes.
Following up, but, yeah, it's, yeah, absolutely. Motion to approve.
In a second.
Second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carried. Number 11 is approval of the Tri-County Fiscal Year 23 budget.
They were balanced last year because they couldn't fill all their positions, so, yeah, that keeps our, you know, assessments a little lower, so. Not that, I mean, we're so high as the Florida.
I'll entertain a motion to approve Tri-County's budget.
So moved.
In a second.
Second. Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Zivaldi?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
We're gonna leave the going to closed session.
A motion to go into closed session pursuant to section two of the Open Meetings Act. Five Illinois compiled statutes, 120 dash two, see, reviewed, discussion of minutes lawfully closed in the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of a specific employee of the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee to determine its validity.
In a second.
Second.
Five minutes? Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Brazel?
Yes.
Mr. Beavers?
Yes.
Mrs. Zivaldi?
Yes.